We'll call Scottsboro Work Session Monday, July 27th. Order, indication given by Mr. Kimber and pleasure waiting to skin by Mr. Baker.
On my guide, we give thanks and praise for the wickedness forces. We ask you to be with the mayor and council this evening as they go about the public business. Lead, guide, and direct them all that they do. Be with our city employees and first responders, keep them safe and warm. These things we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start on the work session, I'm going to add item seven, which is to discuss the Tier One and Tier Two conversion. All right. Number one is public hearing. I apologize for Kangzi Chan doing business as Sinju Sushi Kabachi and Seafood. So at this time, this is the time and place for a public hearing. Is there anyone here against this? Is there anyone here against this? Is there anyone here for this? We'll close the public hearing at this time. Ms. Phyllis, will you cover the fourth place?
The applicant is Kangzi Chan, type of license, restaurant, retail liquor class one. Establishment is Sinju Sushi Kabachi and Seafood, located at 24961 Highway 72 East, Suite B. There were six businesses surveyed and no objections. The nearest church and school finished requirements remain. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply and zoning verification complots.
Thank you. We'll put this on next week's agenda next week as well. We'll go to item number two. Public hearing by all license from Miles Smith doing business is cattle stampede steakhouse. Again, this is time and place for a public hearing. Is there anyone here against this? Is there anyone here against this? Is there anyone here for this? Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Phyllis, will you cover the fourth place?
The applicant is Miles Smith, type of license, retail beer and wine, on and off premise. The establishment is cattle stampede steakhouse, located at 2398 John T. Ray Parkway. There were five businesses surveyed and no objections. The nearest church and school finished requirements remain. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply and zoning verification complots.
Thank you. Miles, we'll put that on next week's agenda as well. We'll go to item number three. Dr. Reyes, SRO program.
Appreciate y'all having me here tonight. Just very briefly, a couple of things that I'd like to bring to your attention. First of all, the SRO program. Back in the spring of 18, Mayor Shelton and I discussed safety improvements within our school system. At that time, we had two school resource officers, one in the high school, one at the junior high. We did not have data coverage at the elementary schools. Of course, we would have coverage if needed if we called, but we did not have coverage there. So the mayor and I talked about that for quite a while, beginning again back in the spring of 18. We, at some point in time, got Mr. Roy Lightfoot of Water, Sewer, and Gas. We had several meetings, the three of us, to talk about potential options that we might have. Kieran Bradford was also a part of that as our community engagement coordinator. And we were able to come up with a system where people, citizens of the Scottsboro could then own their water, sewer, gas field. They could then place a donation, three, five, 10, or whatever amount that they wanted to. Currently, if my figures are correct, we have somewhere around $1,300 a month that is coming in monthly through that. So we get about $15,000, which is about half of the salary of an SRO officer. We've had other larger donations from the community that actually we were able to pay for all of those three officers with also the additional $32,000 that was allotted by the council last year. So we were able to pay for all of those. As I said, we have about $15,000 from water, sewer, and gas. We don't know how good our donations are going to be this year, quite frankly, with all the things that have gone on. We've seen donations drop in our athletic programs and things of that nature as well. So I don't know how big those donations will be this year, but the way I have it figured, if we, let's say we don't get any donations with that $15,000, we would obviously have to put 17 to make it a full officer at 32. And then additional 32 if we didn't get any other donations. And if the council would be so kind as to continue the 32,000 that they gave last year, then that will be 32,000 from the council. We would get 15 from the water, sewer, and gas, and we would have to put in about $50,000 from the school system. And that's certainly something that we're willing to do and need to do because it's important to keep our kids safe. So that's kind of where we are, and we certainly would appreciate any consideration that y'all had as well. And then if I could mention, we've had some discussion in our board meetings, the last couple of meetings, and I know Mr. Stewart, you were there last week, week before, but we weren't able to discuss at that time. But I do want to just mention, I've spoken with the mayor about a joint endeavor between the school system and the city with some land there between the junior high, about that bottom, is that bottom part, it's right next to it, about potentially a joint endeavor. And again, we had some good conversations with the board. There were some pro and some con, but I am of the belief that, or at least I'm interested in us looking at potentially joining with the city for a feasibility study. Again, I think it's just something that, you know, look at what we did with Brownwood. We just signed on another group. We actually have over 40,000 square feet in Brownwood now that's now occupied, obviously by DHR. And we have another group that's occupying 10,000 square feet, as you look to the building to the right. So, you know, it's something that we turned in as school property, but it's something that we turned in, something very positive for the community. And so I would just say to you that if this is a feasibility study that you would be interested in doing, that we certainly would be interested in partnering with y'all at least to, you know, see what we might could do. You know, one of the things I always think about is, and I've lived in three different towns, and, you know, a lot of times you'll hear community members say, "Well, why can't we have this in our town?" And so that's kind of the reason why I'm in support of that is because, again, I'm not saying that we're going to necessarily do anything, but I do think we need to try to explore all the options that we can. And I would certainly be willing to join y'all if, in fact, we, as a group, decided to look into some of these things with that particular property. So again, that's all we have, again, on the SRO. Certainly would appreciate your support if we could continue to get that allocation. It would make life to our kids, and I appreciate Mr. Ashburn bringing that up and then other council members voting that in as well, because it made a big difference. And the officers loved it, and the kids loved it, and I think the community is certainly behind that. So appreciate anything y'all could do for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. What discussion did we have on the SRO program? I know Dr. Reyes covered both three and four. We'll go to three right now on the SRO program.
As far as that 32,000 goes, we might try to budget on, is that a possibility?
Well, last year, we took that money that was in excess of that for lawn tax.
Yeah.
Of course, this year, that lawn tax is not over budget as much, but I'd still like to see this fund if we had to take it from sales tax.
Yeah. So that's something we entertain the idea of, and our budget maybe just to make it an item every year, you know? And we can make that, just set the threshold of 32,000, and whatever we have lower, we just make it, you know, if we have excess, we just make that.
We're over on that lawn, but we're off on our lodging and gasoline too. It's hard to say how our budget's going to end up with this virus continuing on, but I'd still like to go ahead and let them know that the council is not going to back them for the SRO for the coming year.
All right.
But we also need to, if we're going to do this, make it clear, you know, it's not just the dirt to do that. We're throwing in two others too. We just put it all together. So you're not running through.
And as far as continuing to put it on budget, I think we need to look at year to year.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Have you already budgeted for those SROs yet?
Well, we have excess money still left over until September 30th, but then when we do our Act 21 budget, if we start October 1st, we know that we'll have to budget that additional amount from our monies to go towards that. So yes, that's our plans to do, absolutely.
Thank you. We'll put on next week's agenda, things like that. We put on June 9th, so that's okay. Next week, we can, okay. We put on tonight's agenda.
Yes.
All right, and now let's discuss number four, the Page One of Engineering Services with the Kelly Group for the proposed rest project. I guess my question is, how big is this project? What does it entail? What was listening to?
What she will do is, you know, we already have a contract with her. It would just be a different scope of work, and she's going to do a feasibility study, a cost analysis for the project itself, and how much revenue would be generated and what's required to pay for the project. Plus, she has got some contacts with private investors who have expressed an interest. And this is a situation where it would be, the way it's been discussed between Dr. Reyes and Kelly, Kelly Group, is that it would be a public-private partnership where the school system furnishes the property, the city could potentially maintain and operate the facility, and then investor would get some return on their investment, which would be, that way, the school system and the city's not out the development costs if it materialized. But this is just a preliminary engineering phases. She has already gotten some required information from water, sewer, and gas as far as requirements and doing some initial analysis, which she can't go any further until we pay for those services.
Mayor, I've got a quick question.
Sure.
For those of the people in the audience who may not know what we're talking about, we really haven't said what we're talking about. Maybe you would like to explain it for us?
What we're looking at doing is utilizing the property that sits, it's used as a Pee-wee football practice field right now, but we've been in discussions with Kelly Group about the feasibility of doing a water park there. It would be, it wouldn't be a full-blown swimming pool. It would be water slides, a lazy river, splash pad, pavilion. And I've had discussions, there's one similar that she's looked at, we've looked at in Fayette, Alabama, based on the size of property, but she's got some experience in this, and it would be a multi-phase project over a few years.
Has anybody got for the Pee-wee football, where they go?
Well, I mean, you know, it may take a year to just do the analysis, and as far as relocating him, that's between him and the school system, but there's ample property around.
We have property on the other side of the state as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of things. First off, of course, I'd want to make sure this board was on the floor with this, and they had the agree to do it. And second, also, we even want to look at, maybe it'd be something, your board would be interested in just selling the land to the city, and we just do it outright.
Yeah. Mr. Kimber can, I'm sure, recall, years ago, wasn't that city property, and the city traded some of that to the school system so that they could do the recreational complex. So it's sort of bounced around between the two entities more than once.
If it's the property that I understand it is, given originally to the school system, the school system traded the property to the city. I think Mr. Jesse behind him took the original owner. And I think it was originally given so that it could be a placement for Scottsboro High School Band Practice.
It was.
With the land connected to the bottom, the way it does, I think, you know, it'd be something interesting to look at, the city owning it outright if we're going to step in and fix.
Well, the first thing, what we had looked at was just doing the analysis and seeing if it's a doable project.
So we, the city, would be a half in the school.
We would be split between the two parties, 6,000 apiece.
I would like the city of the school board, since it's their property, to vote on it and make some dust after that. That was, I think, the original plan when Quinney Berry first got brought up, because I know I asked if they voted on it.
There's three phases in this, so we're looking at, you know, be more than six for them.
But first, you can't do anything until you do Phase One.
Yes, I understand that, but if you get through Phase One, you decide to go on, there's going to be a lot more money involved.
Sure. Well, that's where we have further discussion.
Yes. If Phase One, don't come on, the rest of it will never come on.
Right. Next, I see where the board, board is taking his time.
There's superintendent.
But I'd like for it to be put to the vote by then.
Well, the initial $6,000 cost would not be, would not have to be for a vote, anything less than 10 would not have to be for a vote. But if you were going in further, as the mayor said, that would be, that would need to be a vote. And as I said, you know, there were some boards, some against it, but it was not a blanket no or a blanket yes. And they have some more questions as well, but again, my thought process is that, you know, all we're doing is looking into this at this point in time, whether it's a feasibility. Well, you know, obviously, you know, just as y'all would, if it's not advantageous for our board, I'm sure that they would not want to go in that direction anymore. But it's just, you know, again, this is just a beginning, it's the starting point, or if we don't do this, we'll never know.
When's y'all's next board meeting?
We will have a, probably have a call with the district for personnel, and then we'll have another one, a full meeting, probably, all of this. I was the sixth.
You can have it.
At five o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll put it on next week's work session. We'll go to item number five, discuss the mower for the cemetery ordinance.
You'll pick it?
Why?
I can. Well, back in the spring, about the time the virus hit, COVID hit, we had presented some proposals to replace a mower, and it was tabled till we saw how things shook out as far as sales tax and so forth. Well, he has, he has come back asking again. He has gotten some new quotes, got three quotes as required, and you can see the lowest quote, and he is good with this. This mower is $5,000. So he's asking that council consider buying a replacement mower.
Did it come out of the sales tax?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Is there a possibility that we could start getting that lease program on, I know it's law, but is that, why are you doing it on a larger equipment? Is that a possibility that we could look into that?
He has looked at it before, and the number of hours they put on it, it's not real feasible, but we can explore it again.
That's, that's, if they've done a look into it, trying to find a good mower, you know, we get used a lot.
They use.
Yeah.
A lot of areas, so.
That's right.
Any other questions on that? If not, we'll put it on tonight's agenda. Item number six, discuss the truck routes. Mr. Kimber, do you want to cover what you did?
There have been discussions some time ago, and I think I recommended that y'all look into making or directing of carrying an ordinance which would make commercial vehicles to be illegal on certain city streets where they shouldn't be anyway, where there is no proper base for them. And the ordinance for you attempts to do that. It states that it would be unlawful and constitute an offense against the city of Scottsboro for any person to operate or remain in a commercial vehicle with a magnitude of gross vehicle weight of 10,000 pounds of mower on the following streets. I did not list the streets because there are several out there that I think may be protection, or want to deal with. And then I put in certain exceptions. Authorized emergency vehicles, some of our fire trucks may need this weight. Delivery trucks delivering items to residences located on the streets. If a moving man company is moving a vehicle onto any certain street, that moving man has the right to be there. School buses, I'm not exactly sure how much a school bus weighs, but I don't want to run risk of our school bus drivers being in trouble. And then garbage trucks and municipal road maintenance equipment. Some of that stuff can be very heavy, and I know there's going to be work done on some of the streets that I've heard mentioned. Then the penalties can be fined. You all would have to determine what y'all felt was reasonable, fine up to whatever for a first offense, and then up to whatever for a second offense. And the ordinance could then become passing, a published due passage and publication as provided by law. Be it, the police could then enforce the ordinance after publication.
Is there, what about the, you know, talk about the streets first, and then go into the fines?
Well, I think we need to designate which streets are in question, number one. And then number two, we need to designate the amount of fines we're going to put on first offense and second offense. Are we going to put it the same? Or, I guess for discussion, are we talking just the streets that are on the West Side Broad Street, or is there other ones around town that need to be added to, or is this something that we can add later on if we so desire?
If you could add whatever streets you felt appropriate at whatever time, it could be amended or changed by council action.
I think we ought to do the ones on the west side, since they're the ones that were, the ones that were items of discussion.
Where are the complaints you're coming from initially?
Do you want me to rattle off some of these? Charlotte, that definitely would be one. Garden Drive, King Street, Chappelle, Hayes, Pine, and Cherry. I'm not sure of all of the other ones. Those are the ones, and then all other ones, if we need to have them.
We'll do that.
Just manage to like exception on that.
You mentioned King.
Yes. And then the fines, what about $250 for the first offense and $500 for the second?
What do you think, Rick? I'm okay with that, because you've got to put some teeth in it, and those folks that live over there, I guarantee you, they're going to think that's enough, because they've had so much issue and problems with it, and I'm ready for it to be resolved. Because there's no reason for them to have to deal with it. Is that enough for the first offense? I think it's reasonable, but I'm just.
And it's something we could always change.
Right.
I think it's a good starting point.
Yeah.
I also think you want to look at Garden Berry. I don't know, you know, down in the past, that was a route that, you know, we tried to get off.
Sorry, guy.
Not really it's got anything to do with the way it was before, that if you add it to this list, that you.
And I'd like to also suggest Apple Tree and Laurel.
You got it.
I think on these squares, those apps in.
Yeah.
Well, you've got to remember, Apple Tree serves safety first, and sometimes Laurel does, and then there's food trucks.
West Side, I'm just talking about the West Side.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Stacy, what about your trucks, your plumbing?
A lot of those excavators weigh over $10,000 pounds.
This would.
$10,000 is not a lot of weight. You know, this is, you can't get those trucks and stuff in there.
You could limit it to clients, like, legal, couldn't you?
You could.
Because actually, these were heavy.
Yeah.
I mean, it's 18-wheeler. I don't think it's any fun either, is it? I mean, where the wire hook, not down the wire. So you could limit it, you could limit it to that district of 18-wheelers in there. That's just a thought, you know?
One of the reasons it's written the way it is, you don't want to be in a prosecution situation where you ask your officer, "Did you count to see if there were 18 wheels on this vehicle?"
Yeah.
Because one of them was flat. You know, you don't want to be in that situation. So a commercial, the way most municipalities have gone to dealing with it is commercial vehicles with manufactured gross vehicle weight off blank. Is what most municipalities are dealing with now, because you just produce the manual and it shuts.
So that would exclude, you take a ton truck pulling an excavator, that would exclude that, right? Because vehicles aren't going to weigh over $10,000. Well, they wouldn't be down that street unless they were going to a reservoir anyway.
Those trucks that pull those are, you know, those are normal moves.
We, one thing you could do to handle that is an exception to delivery trucks or trucks delivering services or items.
Anything else to add or take away?
Well, like I said, I'm on a different side of town. Of course, we're all talking about that West Side, but Garden Berry, you can also look at Woody Ridge. You don't, big trucks down that street. Even though you've got Maples over there and all that, but you don't want them running their trucks down Woody Ridge.
I'm fine with it. Well, the way, the way, it don't matter if you got a truck route all over town, these guys coming into town are using GPS, and if you miss a turn, it'll take you to the next block of the street, the one that there shouldn't be.
Yeah.
You don't want that, I think, will it turn down Woody Ridge?
No.
Going up to Willow Street, yeah.
But I do think this is getting the majority of the problem. I think so. The issues that I've been hearing about are Charlotte, the Garden, Young Garden Drive. drive.
Keep them off Charlotte and Garden, if you're.
King Street. Not worth a travel. We've got those tickets.
Mr. Kenmer, could you have that written up for next week?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other, anything to add, anything else?
Richard, anything to add here?
Thank you all. We'll go to item number seven, discuss tier one, tier two, and first.
Can you talk about it? I can't talk about it. I don't know how in depth I can talk about it, but I can talk about it. So you should have some of this information or some degree of it in front of you, and there's some, there's been several discussions about it off the, outside of the meeting. So there was an act passed in two thousand and nineteen legislative session, I think it was one thirty-two, that allows employees hired after January one of two thousand and thirteen to participate within our retirement system with a tier one benefit. So just, we discussed this actually before the act passed, and you supported it, the act itself with the resolution study, so you should be familiar. The discussion, since that time has been, we've looked at some rough actuarial numbers from RSA and some estimates, and the approximate consideration is that it's going to be around thirty-five or forty thousand dollars a year. That, that number is going to adjust based upon when it goes into effect with each locality. But the point that I really want to stress to you is, this is happening at municipalities around us. Gunners was done it, Colton's done it, most Shores, Iowa was fixing to do it. So it's going, it's happening around, and it is going to be a consideration for new employees and for some of our current employees. And loosely off the top of my head, if we lose a guy to go to Gunnersville, where the pay is relatively the same, the insurance may be a little bit cheaper on family coverage, and they've got twenty-five year retirement, that roughly at the end of the day is going to cost us about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, maybe a little more to train, hire, train, backfield, give them they've got to go. That's just one, one position. Not to mention, we really like the guys we have because they do a good job, and I think Ron would say the same thing. So we would like to see this go, and they support it as far as those employees that are affected, because a lot of them show up tonight from police and fire. This is a citywide thing. My, I talked with Rick some, Rick's talking with the RSA some, to get the numbers hard and fast. My recommendation or suggestion would be to approve a resolution to do it and make it effective October one so it can be funded in the budget year instead of trying to figure it out off the cuff for two or three months. And now, we're not rushing into the funding side of this, we've got good hard numbers when you go to budget it. Again, we think it's going to be around thirty-five thousand dollars a year additional, total additional to our retirement contribution. But you can go ahead and resolve to do it, and when you're, at least that part's over, and Mr. Kenmer, correct me if this, this procedure's wrong, and then fund it, you can make it effectively funded in the budget as of October one. So that, that's what I would suggest if you guys are serious about considering it, and I would encourage you to do that. I don't know if Ron has any extra, or Rick or anybody else, but that's, that's my opinion.
I appreciate the, the hard work that you've done, Patrick, and you, the work you've done as well. You got, you got the police department and your guys, and sent us the email that everybody was in support of it. Wayne, have you had a chance to talk to any of your folks?
We're all hoping we, if I go forward, I sure do.
All right.
Sure do.
Does anyone have any discussion on that?
It's a great way to retain our people.
Yes, absolutely.
Not only that, and a dozen bits are starting to pay, which I'm not going to, but it's, like I say, we're not, we're not going to lose this employee to another city because they can retire off the road.
All the members of the police and fire that are on tier two, they've all signed that they want to be on tier one. And they, they understand that you have to work thirty-something years, first twenty-five years, detrimental to, and the job that they have when you get at an older age, so I think that we should go forward with it. Well, touching on what he just said, and cheating that was really, probably in my mind, you don't want to use, you lose your employees, and that's a, that's a big thing that we ain't got to look at. And it's protecting police and fire and all our trained employees, I'm all for.
It's a huge cost every time you replace one. Any other discussion?
We'll put it on the agenda tonight. Give me about three minutes to convert everything over from the work session to the, to the council meetings.